Call this menu to order. Number one call please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Yep.
Ms. Carl?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. D Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
I'm here.
Ms. Tyson Wright? Mr. Veluski?
Here.
Would you stand up for the next caller?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item tonight, resolve the Board of School Directors' approval of the following minutes for October ten and thirteen. Move. Second. We have motion in a second. All in favor would say aye.
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 Motion approved. Two student representatives will address the Board tonight, first from Sagertown High School, Logan Corner.
Hello, my name is Logan Corner and I'm here to update you on what's happening at Sagertown High School. Congratulations to Sam Patrick who won the D-ten race on October twenty-second, placed nineteenth of the PIA double-A cross-country state championships on November fifth to win his third state medal in four appearances. He's only the second D-ten champ in program history and third three-time state medalist. The fall sports season just ended, the girls soccer team and girls volleyball team both competed in the playoffs. The girls volleyball team won Region Three with an undefeated region record of ten and oh, in a highly competitive double-A classification. They lost to Core in the D-ten semifinals. The girls soccer team lost to Mercyhurst Prep three to one last Saturday. The football team finished the season on a high note defeating Iroquois. First official practice for winter sports is November eighteenth. Senior Brady Greco has been selected as the school winner in the Heisman High School Scholarship Competition. From an applicant pool of thousands of high school scholar athletes graduating with the class of two thousand twenty-three, more than five thousand seven hundred unnamed school winners, great job Brady. Recently, twenty-one student journalists from the Panther Press, Pentheron Yearbook, and Cambridge Springs Pitchfork compete at the PSPA Pennsylvania School Press Association Regional Journalism Competition at Penn State Baron. Winners will be announced in December and advance to states finals in March. The music department under the direction of Mrs. Angela Graham is preparing for the holiday concert, which will be held December nineteenth at seven PM in the auditorium. The public is invited to attend. Pancras School District offered the SAT for the first time at Sagertown on Saturday, November fifth, coordinated by Guidance Counselor Kristi Mordell. Forty-one students tested and sixty-eight percent were Pancras students, with forty-four of those from Sagertown. The test went great and we look forward to hosting it again next year. SHS held a food drive in conjunction with the elementary school to benefit the Gospel Tabernacle Church that provides Thanksgiving meal baskets to families in need. On October twenty-fifth, eleventh graders took the ASVAB exam. The results session will be held tomorrow, several students will be meeting with recruiters. Ninth graders toured the Crawford County Career and Technical Center. Many were impressed with the programs offered and applications to CCTC have been rolling into the guidance office. SHS ski club recently completed cleanup at the seventy-nine Parkin Ride as a service project. They will hold their officer induction ceremony tomorrow at six PM in the library. All members are encouraged to attend. We would like to thank all veterans and active duty military for their service as tomorrow is Veterans Day. We invite the public to check out the wall of thanks in the Panther hallway that recognizes those who serve. Finally, we would like to welcome interim principal Erica Howick to SHS. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for your time, we look forward to updating you next month for more Sagertown news, follow us at thepantherpress.com and on our social media. Thanksgiving issue of the paper will release on November twenty-second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Student representative from Cambridge Springs?
Audrey Bullock.
Hello, my name is Audrey Bullock and I'm here to update you on what is happening at Cambridge Springs. Two weeks ago, our school celebrated Red Ribbon Week. We had four spirit days where students dressed up to show their allegiance against drugs, and we had an assembly at the end of the week in support of Red Ribbon Week. At this assembly, we also highlighted our fall sports teams. Last week, students from the Leadership Council went in small groups to the elementary school to demonstrate Blue Devil Nation games to students. They did these demonstrations so when we hold Blue Devil Nation games, the elementary students are prepared. We will hold this event on November eighteenth. On October twenty-eighth, myself and Mrs. Miller, along with Sagertown students, went to Penn State Baron to participate in the Pennsylvania School Press Association Scholastic Journalism Contest. This was a great opportunity for us and also Sagertown staff to attend. Reporters Matthew Rank and Brianna Malone spoke to us about the behind the scenes of reporting, how to have a successful interview, and the large importance the press holds on its shoulders in the world and in our schools. Our Blue Devils football team has advanced to the District Ten semifinals. For three years, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, they have advanced this far. This is the first year they have gone to the semifinals since then, and our school congratulates them. They play against Eisenhower on Saturday, November twelfth. As for the rest of our fall sports, they are finished and athletes are looking forward to their next season. Seniors Finley Rapture and Laura Bigwell made the video that has made it to the final four in the How Cool Is Our School competition. Voting runs until November twenty-fifth, and you can vote once per day. The video centered around the theme "Together Again," and how Cambridge is coming back together to make school more valuable and fun after the effects of COVID that took a toll on education. We are also together against drug use. Our junior class officers are scouting locations to host our prom. So far, they have looked at the Rambler and Pork Farms as options. They are looking to hold prom the second weekend of May. In October, we held the Second Annual Junior High Fall Formal Dance. It was held in the cafeteria and it was a huge success. Students in junior high for the second year in a row are excited to have their own dance after not being able to attend homecoming anymore. Also in October, tenth grade students took the PSATs. This past Tuesday, eleventh grade students completed the ASVAB. Our journalism and yearbook staffs have divined classrooms to maximize the amount of reporting in our school. Students on the yearbook staff help write articles for the Pitchfork to broaden our topics in our publications. We have created social media for the journalism and yearbook staffs to share what students at Cambridge are doing daily. We also have a podcast under the name Cambridge Speaks on Spotify. Thank you for your time, I look forward to updating you on what is happening at Cambridge Springs next month.
Audrey, thank you so much. Just wanted to recognize this month's Northwest PA Class Act Emerging Leader Zach Lenhardt from Maplewood High School. Zach's a senior, Zach was here for our Monday meeting, he was unable to make it this evening due to prior commitments. He was, just read a quick blurb here. Effort works hard in his persistent character through compassion, honesty, trustworthiness, optimism, and responsibility. He is a good citizen that demonstrates responsibility and respect towards peers and teachers. He serves as a positive influential representative of his school community. So we congratulate Zach for this month. Thank you. Just want to do citizens, there are no registered citizens, but are there any citizens who are here who would like to speak on agenda items? Okay. And before we go to the next hour, for the benefit of Mrs. White, I'd like to go over some parliamentary procedures for the Board. All requests for information are addressed to the Chair, even although the question is aimed at another member, director. And all the answers to the question still is directed to the Chair. And this procedure is very important because it's to disallow any argument between Board members. So, and well, I wish there was a page here, but page five R. If you've got any questions about it. Just, and also, if any Board members feel that the pressure was raised, they had nothing to do with what, a motion, you have the right to rise to point of order. In other words, everything stops and your point of order will be heard by the Chair. And if either point of order is legitimate, then everything stops and continue with whatever items. So, that's it for now. So I hope that you and your member, please read it and make sure that we do everything right. All right, next item will be Education Report. Item A, recommend approval of student travel as listed.
Some move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. Second. Any further discussion? And the reason why you say further discussion, because this has been discussed Monday, okay? No further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
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 Motion approved. Item B, recommend approval of one Pancras Cyber Academy graduate from Cambridge Springs attendance area. Second. Well, we have a motion and definitely a second. An additional discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
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 Motion approved. Item C, approve the attached agreement with lockdown browser and studymate campus license.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
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 Motion approved. Facilities and Transportation Report, item A, approve the attached drinking water test results for Cambridge area, Maplewood Elementary, Maplewood High School, and Sagertown area.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
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 All motion approved. Item B, resolve with the Pancras Board of School Directors, approve McClure Company Phase Three or Amendment Two to Guarantee Energy Saving Project not to exceed two million forty-two thousand one hundred seventy dollars pending final solicitor review and approval.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So I did, Eric Pacrazio is here from McClure, he has handed out information to the Board, additional information, Board will get us the addendum in the next couple of days for solicitor approval. The approval tonight will give the District and McClure to go ahead to start procuring equipment early, because the sooner, the better as far as the time that it needs to ship, as well as arranging for that work this summer. So Eric, do you want to take a couple of minutes and run through the presentation in front and we receive this and we'll have it on the website as well as the School Board Agenda tomorrow?
Yep, real high level, there's not a whole lot of ECMs like the last two projects, really we're mostly focused on windows and doors here at the four buildings we've updated already. You can flip through it, but we have the scope of work in there which outlines where the windows and doors will be replaced in the project. For down here in Sagertown Elementary, it's essentially all the windows and a high number of doors, you can see the doors in yellow, the windows in red. This is by far the most windows that we'll be replacing in the buildings, since we've already done a significant amount of the windows already at the other buildings. And the reason being is these are the windows that we didn't do in those projects that we still identified as needs. By working with Mr. Dixon and the staff, we came up with this scope of work that we are proposing for the district. And you could just see if you flip through the pages, through the schools that we have where the windows and doors are being replaced. And we have walked through with contractors, so we do have, that is a hard bid number that we provided. As Dr. Glassbowl said, if approved tonight, our goal will be then to begin measuring for final installation, measuring for ordering, have that all accomplished and have everything over, though it can be executed as soon as possible so we can then order the product.
That was quick. Any questions for?
I see Sagertown High School, the big window repairs in the cafeteria. I made a deer run through there about six years ago, this could be a deer-proof window or not. Kind of guaranteed we get on that.
So, actually, it's funny you mention that, because a lot of schools are going with a three-M coating on the windows and make them shatterproof if you will. That's something we can always evaluate as well.
So honestly, that's why there's that additional two hundred thousand dollars, because we are going to put some of that ballistic glass in various areas. So it's shatterproof as well as bolt resistant, not necessarily bolt proof. Good point.
So if the deer does get in, we can't shoot it.
He'll bounce right off.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the only other item that's not related to the doors is the domestic water system down here that we did not replace. Going through there, Mr. Dixon realized that system's about eight years old. We'll be removing the giant expansion tank in that room and upgrading with a condensing shower boiler that we have here that services the building's heating. So it'll be very similar, and with those type systems, and they are the air-coil boilers that we have here already.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Motion still on the floor, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is, we're going to have a hard bid number approved in December for the Cambridge Springs High School roof timeline, for the roof project. But we do have a timeline on there, we'd like you guys to approve it because we are out the bid, we are getting hard numbers and we're moving forward that. So approval of the attached Cambridge Springs roof timeline repair.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
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 Motion approved. Item B, approve the list of contracted student transportation drivers.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Approve the attached parent provided transportation agreement?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Financial report, item A, recommend approval of the attached treasurer's reports.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item B, recommend approval of payment of the attached dispersments.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Just a question on that, there's multiple fifty-three dollars, multiple like seventy-seven, like all throughout, what are those exactly?
Those are officials.
Okay.
Like refs for teams, yeah.
Gotcha. I'm glad, I'm glad we're looking at it though. Like you gotta keep pissing on our toes sometimes.
Yeah, I know.
Any further discussion? All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Personnel report, item A, resolve the Pancras Board of School Directors' point, Dr. Erica Howick as interim Sagertown High School Principal effective November fourteenth, and directly superintendent to adjust for salary accordingly.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Dr. Howick's here tonight, I'd just like to thank her for being here and stepping up to help us out.
Thank you.
Thanks. Items B through I, I would like to recommend that we approve all as a consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of the items? If not, all in favor would say aye.
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 Is there any new business this evening? Is anybody, any Board members have anything to add? Okay, announcement, the Board met an executive session on November seventh and tenth for personnel negotiations and litigation. There are no, there are registered citizens comments, I apologize. First one is John Kerr.
I'd like to speak tonight, nothing too major, just a few things I've noticed as a parent.
Could you say in a center of the room, we can all hear.
Sure. One of the things I've noticed as a parent was, actually, I was playing on the playground with my daughter while my son was at running practice, and it was really wet, and I got to inquire about it. And I was curious, is there anything in place or is there anything we can do about the wet playground at the Sagertown Elementary here? I was told, I'm not sure, a little bit of rumor here, that maybe some people had maybe volunteered to help out with this, but I'm not sure of those details, if anyone could help me out, that'd be great. But is there any plans to fix that or address that, is there a way to address that?
Just going out on the side here by the pavilion, is it kind of spongy in the one area?
Yeah, yeah, and when it rains, I was there right after it rained, so maybe that's probably part of the issue, but I asked the kids about it. I had a daughter in first grade and a son in fourth, and they were like, oh yeah, if it's wet out, yeah, we're not, we can't get in there.
I think, I think what I can say is, I know that we have talked conversations about the summer project, you know, last, we had, we had the projects here last summer, but the summer project was going to be to put some drainage in there, minimal drainage, but also to get some of the turf on top, right? We didn't have the turf on top of that, right? That's just straight chips.
Okay, sure.
Chip chips.
Yes.
Okay, so in some of the other playgrounds, we use some of that AstroTurf, the recycled turf without the pellets, we put that on top so at least it's not as wet and it rains a little better. So we do have some plans to improve that area this summer.
Okay, is that, so you're saying next summer?
This comes coming soon.
Okay.
Twenty-three.
Okay, twenty, twenty-three, okay, all right. Tell the kids to hold on then.
It's kind of hard to do it in winter time.
A little bit, yeah, I work construction, if it's anything that we can do to help along the way, I know, so my wife brought it to me after I mentioned, well, I mentioned it to her, I said, hey, what's up with this? She said, well, the PTA had talked about it and discussed it. If there's anything we can do to help in the meantime, let us know. I work construction, I'm pretty handy on machines, if there's more volunteers, whatever, we'd be more happy to help out, you know what I mean? That way we can get the kids full use of it.
If you want to give me your phone number, I'll take it, because I know that Mr. Carroll and the PTO do have some things in work, since they have talked about additional improvements.
Yep.
They've been saving money. There's also a company that we may try to get for some additional support that has offered to help with Cambridge Springs Playground.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, I can, you know.
If you want to write down your name, phone number, I'll take it.
Sure, you want it right now?
I'll take it right now, Bill. What way to die, I don't want you to tell me. Anything else, sir?
No, that's pretty much it.
Jessica Ashbaugh, with thought Council President.
I was just coming today to talk about the reconfiguration with the specials. I know with COVID, it really kind of messed up everything in life, but what is happening this year is our special instruction classes are going a week long instead of rotating on an A-B-C-D schedule, and there's some issues with that. What we're hoping to do is find a way to go back to the old rotation system that seems to work better overall with just instruction purposes, but also overall experience way for the children. Basically, what we're seeing happen is you're having the specials one week long, so Week A, whatever you're having for Week A, it could be a variety, they're meeting approximately forty-one times, B forty-seven to forty-eight, C forty-six to forty-seven times, and then D forty-six and a half and forty-seven and a half, these vary depending upon snow days. The issue especially for our Week A kiddos, we're seeing about a thirty percent decrease in their educational opportunities during that week. What does that look like? It means if you have a kiddo that has gym class on Week A, they might have gym class twice that week, depending on if it's a Thanksgiving week. They might only have it three times that week, or maybe we're getting flooded with a lot of information at once for our little minds, then we go three weeks without seeing those teachers, and we're like, you know, what does that look like as far as rapport goes between that teacher? What does that look like with hanging up your projects that you worked really hard on in art class? We're not seeing those till way, way, way later. So another area to address is just the retention, again, we're getting flooded for one week, then three weeks kind of ghosting on that. It's that idea, we are seeing progress forward, but it's like you're taking three steps forward and two and a half back, it's just that shuffle going along. Issues specifically with art, with ceramics projects, we're looking at those are taking three months to complete versus a month. Putting stuff out, firing kilns, kilns aren't being completely full when they're being fired, which is a waste of electricity. Kilns are not cheap to run. Technology, for, at least for Sagertown Elementary, Sagertown is, the technology is the hub for the Panther incentive program. If you're familiar with behavior mod programs, the whole purpose of them is to do it consistently, on time, and within an appropriate timeframe. If you have someone getting an incentive program three weeks down the road, it doesn't really work from a behavior mod standpoint. Again, retention, when you are only doing something, you're flooding these kiddos one week at a time, and then they're not practicing it, if you're not using it, you lose it. So then our teachers are spending the first one to two days of that one week reteaching everything, and then we only have three days to teach the new stuff. And it's frustrating a lot of kiddos. Music, once again, retention, we're reteaching, 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 practice is best, don't get me wrong, but how are we supposed to have a Christmas concert if they're only meeting one week? I mean, I'm all for practicing, you know, and enriching my kiddo's lives, but I'm not a music teacher. One of the really important things is, you know, the kids talk all the time. When we had those plays last year, when the Pirates was playing, when Matilda was put on, you still hear about Matilda, the kids still talk about it. The sixth graders are so excited for whatever is being put on this year. That might not be a reality if we don't go back to our regular rotating schedule. Gym class, and one of the concerns, especially with the MDS students, is are the IEPs being addressed appropriately? Again, I'm not a teacher here, but my understanding with IEPs, those are done on a weekly basis. If you're being flooded with one class, one week, are those, and then you're not having it for another four weeks, are those being addressed appropriately and are we violating those IEPs? This was kind of like off topic, and library has been an issue ongoing. Would love to see a library and back in the schools once a week, having those specials once a week. Basically, I understand Pancras as a whole, we want unity, but what may work for one school might not work for all the schools, and we're just asking to please allow the each individual schools to set up the system that works best for their school. And at least at Sagertown Elementary, the best is that rotating for consistency, so kiddos are not only getting the important instruction, they're having that relationship with a teacher, because those experiences and those teachers, what they did in those moments, those are what they're going to remember when they're thirty-five years old, standing in front of you today, or seventy-five years old later down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any non-registered citizens comment? Any other? Board remarks? Okay, we're going to go to the Board Member's remarks, we'll start from Mr. Veluski.
First, I'd like to thank Logan Corner and Audrey Bullock for their student updates tonight, we always like hearing those, all of us do. The other thing is I want to thank all the veterans for their service and dedication. And the third thing is I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is, we, our country's been blessed beyond measure with the freedoms that we have, and we owe the thanks to the almighty God, and we need to remember that this Thanksgiving. That's it.
I'd like to thank the two student delegates, we appreciate you keeping us updated, because we're not here, so it's great, we appreciate it. I'd like to congratulate our fall sports winners. Congratulate Zach Lenhardt for his accomplishments. I'd like to thank our vets, past and present, it means a lot to me, a lot of my family members served, even lost my oldest son, so we appreciate your service to our country. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Howick for coming on board, wish you godspeed. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, enjoy the time with your family and friends, and have a safe holiday.
Just want to reiterate, congratulations to those that had the fall sports achievements, it's great for the girls soccer team, volleyball team, and follow them on the Panther Press and Sam Patrick, and then of course Brady Greco. Logan and Audrey, thank you for coming and presenting, really wish we had someone from Maplewood, so, I don't know, so anybody you guys can like maybe get somebody from Maplewood here, you can talk to somebody, it'd be helpful to hear from Maplewood as well since we're not out there. And congratulations to Zach Lenhardt as well, he was here Monday, so it was nice to see him. And as Bob and David already mentioned, happy Veterans Day, I do have a lot of veterans in my family as well, so we appreciate the sacrifice and the service that they provided for our country. Happy Thanksgivings coming up upon that time as well, and the holiday spirit, so it's a good time of the year. There's a lot of good activities happening in our school district, so I appreciate hearing all these things, and it's nice to have the parents coming too, and it's nice to see a full room. I appreciate that, that you guys are coming to the meetings, and I do appreciate that. Oftentimes, we're sitting here and the room is empty. Oftentimes, we're sitting here and the room is empty, which is fine, but it's nice to have participation too. So thank you for coming, and I hope this continues. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Well, thanks, you know, reiterate, thanks to the students. I just downloaded Spotify, or got the podcast, so I will be listed on the way home. Looking forward to that, thank you. Real, well, actually, I hate to do this, but I'm gonna ramble a little bit. I do want to say Happy Veterans Day to everybody. That means a lot to be a vet, and I want to thank all the veterans for their sacrifice, and also the families of the veterans. They've also had to make certain sacrifices, so we have to remember all that. Real quick on the playground, I will speak up on that, because I've complained to Mr. Dixon about that for two years. I have equipment, I've offered equipment, I've offered my services, and I know there's other volunteers that would help fix the playground, and we could quit wasting money on wood chips every year, and we could do it right and save the district money. So, I'm a little disappointed that that's still going on. Jessica Ashbaugh, I'm glad you brought up what you did, I appreciate it. One comment you made about good for one school, not for the other, I have to disagree with that one, because I've had several complaints from other schools. I don't think it's good for the kids to do the way we're doing it. I know we're not supposed to be involved with that, but I will speak my mind, I am a taxpayer and on the board, so. I said this last month, and I'll say it again, we make a change to make life easier for ourselves, but it is the kids first. I think the way we're doing it with these kids is unfair. I don't think they're getting the education they can get. They're spending too much time, they'll spend, like you said, they spend a week learning something, and then they don't see that person for three or four weeks. That defeats the purpose. How we expect to increase scores by doing stupid things like that? I wish that our principals would not let that happen, and I hope that we address this soon and we can fix that, because it's not fair to the teachers, and it's not fair to the students. Why we do that, I don't get it. It did work very well here in Sagertown, and I did enjoy going to the place, and I hope we can continue to do that. We seem to forget how important it is for these young kids and their mind development and everything to have these special days, I guess that's what you call them, but to make a change like that, I, I just disagree with that whole part of it. I did have one thing to touch on for the education meeting we had Monday there. A great presentation, thank you very much. But the one thing I'd like to see added, and maybe talk about later, is I'd like to see goals set at a sooner timeframe, instead of saying by 2030, we're gonna hope to hit such and such date. I don't want us to be that school, I'd rather see us, you know, by 2024, we're hoping to hit this goal. By 2026, we're hoping to hit this goal. We're not gonna always hit everything we want, but if we have goals to attain, something to work for, then we have motivation to double-check ourselves, I guess. I, I think it's important to me just to have that timeline and for parents to see it, and, and work with the teachers on that too. We seem to forget that our teachers have to go through a lot. We ask more and more of them every year. It's getting harder and harder, class sizes are bigger, kids are way behind now, so we're asking more and more of them every year to get caught up with reading and math and everything. So, let's do what we can to make it attainable goals for them. So... I forgot my notes at home. So anyhow, Happy Thanksgiving, and first day of buck season's gonna be right after Thanksgiving, so good luck to all our hunters. I hope to hear some great stories from our kids in school, and have a safe holiday, and see you next month.
I didn't think of what it was, I mean, you can interrupt me, it's alright. So, thank you to our, our student speakers for coming in, I was talking to Logan on the way in. It's not a competition, if it was, Audrey won. But it's not a competition. No, you guys both did spectacular. Logan, I will say you do better than Porter, who has been here in the past. Thank you, Dr. Howick, for coming to the meeting and stepping up when our district needs you. Some things were covered by our students across country, District Ten, Sam Hetrick, District Ten Champ across country, that's awesome. Three-time state medalists, that's awesome. We had Joe Grundy qualified for states. I get Joe and Jonathan confused. Maplewood Girls Volleyball, I'm not a student of Maplewood, I'll try to do an update for Maplewood. Girls Volleyball, District Ten Champs, moving on to the state playoffs, won their first round out of the district. Maplewood Boys are playing Reynolds this weekend, Cambridge Springs is playing Eisenhower. Good luck to all of them. Thank you very much to all our veterans. You know, thank you to Mrs. Brown for, for the picture. No offense to Luigi, or Brian, or Tim's picture, or Art's, but mine's the best. Thank you, Carson. Not everything's a competition, but if it was, Carson drew the best picture, and thank you very much.
Converse there.
You should, you should, it's very subjective. You know, something I say as a veteran is, I'm, I'm a much better veteran than I was a sailor. I was a little intemperate during my time serving, but I did get to go and see exotic places, see the Persian Gulf a couple of times. And much like what you learn in school, I didn't realize how much that I learned until after I was out of the Navy and got to see what the world was like. Then I realized how much I'd learned during my time of service. So thank you to all our veterans, as Tim said, to all the families. It's easy to underappreciate the importance of families. I know coming back from being overseas, seeing the, the families reunite on the, on the pier is one of the most emotional things I've ever seen. We toured the Crawford County Career and Technical Center. Just something to bring up is a point of pride at Penn Crest, is we have more students at the Crawford County Career and Technical Center than any other schools in Crawford County. It's something we really value as a district and as a community. Speaking of which, you know, talking about some of our scores and things, leadership is something that, that is required for all of us here in the school board. And we need to keep the focus on education and have our administration spending their time and money in the classrooms and not worrying about the school board and what's happening in the school board. Every minute that we waste that's not education-related wastes tax dollars, and it keeps administration out of the classrooms. You know, if we decide that we're going to reshuffle a committee, if we're gonna talk about a policy again, if we're gonna say, you know, should we have a sergeant-at-arms? Any of these things that takes the focus out of the classroom and into the boardroom is doing a disservice to our entire community. And when we want to set goals, like what Tim was talking about, the board's the one that needs to keep, keep the, the heat on. We need to keep the focus on that and not on us, not lawsuits over social media, none of the nonsense. And I, I don't want this to be like, the beginning of the meeting started with going through the chair. The chair is important and sets the pace, but it's all of us. This is not me complaining about other board members, it's me trying to take responsibility and saying that we need to get back to, in the spirit of Veterans Day, doing our duty. Our duty is to provide the best educational opportunities that our community can provide. We hear from people here that want our community to do better, want better results, and if we don't do that as a board, if we don't command that as a board, then we're wasting time and we're wasting taxpayers' dollars. That's all I have.
And a quick shout-out to Gabriella. I think one picture's better.
Mrs. Sibley?
Okay, my motto for my German office this year is going to be positives for Penn Crest, where I want to celebrate the positives and work toward additional positives. I recently attended the Fall Advisory Meeting, where I was privileged to meet all of the counselors. It was a positive experience for all of us, as I gathered important information to move us towards scholarships for dual enrollment students, giving all students an opportunity to take a college class free of charge. An additional positive action was highlighting the Hagan Scholarship, which is by school invitation only, and the motherload of scholarships, if anybody's familiar with that one. At this time, only Maplewood is listed to receive the Hagan Scholarship, and both Sagertown and Cambridge Springs counselors will seek it for their schools. Parents of seniors, you do not want to miss that scholarship, and it, the applications are due by December first, so you might want to check that out. And lastly, I want to commend Kylie Boring for her positive work with the Make-A-Wish Foundation, in helping to bring a smile to the face of someone she most likely doesn't even know. Well done. And then lastly, I want to congratulate all of our, our veterans, and as, as a thought, I know that the, if anybody's familiar with the Quilts of Valor, I know that over at Palmero Toyota, they have like a voting thing, I guess, where Toyota gives money to different organizations, and the Quilts of Valor, where they make quilts for veterans, is one of those. You can go in and just put your little voting ticket in there, and whichever box gets the most votes, they, they give money, scholarship, or money accordingly. So, I thought that was a really good thing. We had a presenter who showed us veterans receiving those quilts, and it was very moving. I mean, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. So, if you want to vote for that, over at Palmero Toyota, that would be a great thing. And I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Mrs. Davis?
My thoughts are a little all over the place, I'm gonna try to keep them organized. I think the biggest focus for me this week was that it was really nice to spend the lion's share of our conversation discussing education. We had a really nice presentation from Mr. Newman on Monday evening. I find myself very frustrated at times, because even when I ran as a school board member, I was very uncomfortable with the idea of being a politician. I don't consider myself a politician. Don't even get me started. But I'm more an advocate for, for children. And my focus from the beginning has been the children. I get frustrated, like, I don't like to take other people's words, but I, I find myself frustrated sometimes when I feel like committees are being shifted around and, and our focus has become more on finding fault rather than looking for ways to better our district. I'm encouraged to see the progress that we're making, seeing the, the presentation that Mr. Newman put up, setting goals. I do agree that we need to shorten those, those goals and make, you know, shoot, shoot a little higher for getting these things accomplished. Along with that, I'd like to thank community members for coming in, sharing something as, you know, your little guys on the playground, that's important. That's really important to our district. Those kids deserve a nice place to play without getting a little feet wet. And Ms. Ashwell, thank you so much for sharing, I, I agree with you and the things that you brought up. I, I think it's interesting that, you know, we've talked about consistency from school to school, and I understand the concept that maybe we, what would suit one school, we, we certainly wouldn't want to hold back one school, because another school could prepare to meet those same goals, but I would really like us as a district, rather than holding one back, make sure that we bolster the other one or two to catch up. That's been a concern of mine for quite some time. Which leads into the consideration that we have, just, we have students here consistently from Cambridge, from Sagertown. I don't ever see kids from Maplewood, very, very rarely. Sadly, I think that has to do with the fact that we leave out in Sagertown, and trust me, at five dollars and twenty-four cents a gallon to drive here two, three, four times a month, it's frustrating, and I'm sure kids with homework and whatnot. We try meeting out of Maplewood, we don't have a tendency to. So, I would like to see the Maplewood parents step up and try to get a little more involved, and encourage their children to get more involved, so they feel a part. So, all of those, I'm all over the place with that, but I just, I, just, let's, let's just keep moving, as a district, as individuals, and as a group. And then of course, at the football club. So this Saturday, I am so darn proud of these kids. They had a rough start to the season with Maplewood, I know Cambridge is doing well. I was so proud of them last week, those boys left everything they had on the field. They're playing a team that beat them pretty bad last time, so I am really, fingers crossed, and I'd love to wish them luck to have a safe, very successful game against Maplewood and Cambridge on Saturday. Keep it up, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch is on the, what was that? Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Do you have any comments this evening?
I just wanted to say thank you to our teachers and board members that are veterans, and to our students that are considering joining the service. I guess you could talk to any one of us, and whoa, I'll tell you that we've all gained a lot of knowledge and been better people because of our service. Some of us went through a lot more than others. I know Mr. Brooks, you know, his service demanded a lot of him, and he got to see, you know, a lot of the horrors of what actually goes on. I served mostly in peacetime, but I, I did serve on a ship, and I was stationed in Cuba for a while before nine eleven. So, but I, I brought a lot of that into the outside world, as far as working for other people and in leadership positions afterwards too, so being a veteran and serving your time serves a lot of purpose. So, I just wanted to thank everybody, and I want to thank for the card that I received, I wanted to stop in tomorrow and pick it up. Everybody going hunting, please do a good job, because I'm tired seeing them on the side of the road. My daughter hit two of them already this week. A friend of mine hit one with his semi and caused $5,000 worth of damage, so you guys need to go out there and do a better job of hunting. Pretty much all I have to say. I would like to hear more from the other schools too. We get a lot of updates and stuff from the Panther Press and, you know, what goes on here in Sagertown. I'd like to hear something from the other schools also. That's pretty much all I have to say. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Yeah, I would like to say about Monday's Veterans Day, and that, being a veteran to me is very important. I was twenty years old, a legal, I want to emphasize, a legal immigrant, that received a draft notice, and, and I, and in a way, I was so glad to get it, because I figured that, that would show the, the American people that was part of the, of America. And, but unfortunately, I got called during a war. The people started hitting anybody that wore a uniform after a while. I lived in, in New York at the time, and I was proud to wear my uniform in town. And then people just started walking away, you know, look at me like they, they want to kill me with their, with their eyes. But unfortunately, some politicians decide to send the, the vest to a war that sometime has nothing to do with our defense. I think the only one that really was justified was when we went to Afghanistan to get those people who caused nine eleven. But I spent my, remainder of my time in the service in Washington DC, and the reason why I'm here today, because that's where I met my wife. And we got married in sixty-eight, and I hope that everybody's satisfied, don't blame my wife for me being here tonight.
Fuck the cross for mine.
And it's funny that my wife lived in the neighborhood where Mr. Brooks' family were. And, and they, both families were very close to each other. You know, Brooks' grandfather was a farmer, my father-in-law was a farmer, and they did all that stuff together. But again, you know, all veterans went through a lot, and that's why whatever we can do to help them out, especially those who got wounded, there's a Wounded Warrior Association that I send every month some whatever I can. And I can see, well, I gotta... And I can see, well, I gotta, I go back once. Back in World War Two, you know, somebody, one of our soldiers got shot, the chance of survival was, was very small. Through the years, medicine increased, and, and the ability to evacuate our soldiers as best we could was available, so a lot of people, a lot of our young people survived. But they lost legs, arms, they got burned, especially Vietnam. And they still, and, and through the wars, you know, the, uh, all the wars have been so far, you know, they, they all suffering even today. So those are the ones that really need to be thanked, and, and we should do something about it. On the, on the other, on the other stand, I agree with Mr. Brooks, I think people that go on, 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 uh, social media like Facebook, they should stop attacking people they don't like, because it don't make any sense. And when you do, you know, you might make a mistake, and you, and you mention something you don't want, you really hoped that you should never had, but you do it, and it's a shame. I stopped doing that because it don't make any sense, like Mr. Brooks said, you know, it's a waste of time, you might hurt people feelings, but that don't make any sense at all, you know, to get on social media and attack other people. Now, as far as hunting, you know, how much everybody know, they believe or not, the first day of hunt is a twenty-seven, which is a Sunday. I don't know if you, any of you know that, but that's what I read yesterday, because I want to know what the first day was. Usually it's a Monday, but it looks like it'll be allowed to hunt on Sunday, so. So let's help them, Mr. Lynch, and all the drivers that make a living out of driving, because that's, he, he drives the same bike and, and goes and pick up the, uh, supplies that we need on a daily basis. And finally, well, have a nice Thanksgiving. I would like to go back and, and, and chat with those elementary kids in, in, in Mrs. Brown's class. And I'll see you next month, hopefully. Okay?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Stand.
Second. All right, we got a motion this second. Only fair to say.
Aye.
All right. Now, follow this.
Wait, Tim, I remember what you had to say.